Road. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, October 1st. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and the first order of business is to ask that everybody in the room please turn off or mute your cellphones or other electronic devices, including me. And I've asked trustee Lamfair to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Rob, you want to go through quorum check?
Certainly. Next meeting, October 10th study session, this is rescheduled to the 10th, Thursday, the 10th.
Yes.
Yep, and then October 15th, regular meeting?
I'm not here.
You're out. Right. And then we have the annual budget meeting on the 29th.
Looking forward to that.
We will work on that. Thank you.
Kathy's not here to take her lunch order, so... And just so everybody understands is that our new format for the budget meeting is it's an all-day effort rather than doing it in five or six different evening meetings. We start at, what, 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning? And we basically hear all of the budgets in one sitting throughout the day and deliberate on the various departments as they come through. And we found last year, it really helped us understand how the whole budget is knitted together and how the various components impact each other. And it was also good to see how certain things cross over, so I think it was a really effective and efficient way to do it, and that way we can keep on track with other business through the remainder of November. All right, so item number four is public comment. This is the time of the evening when anybody from the audience who wishes to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda is welcome to come up to the microphone and share your thoughts with us. Would anybody like to address council on an item not on the agenda? Come on up. How's it going, Elijah?
(inaudible)
If you can come out on the 29th and remind us again, Elijah. Well, if you want lunch, come around 11:30, so...
(inaudible) on the 10th. I have eye appointment or an eye treatment in the morning that sometimes puts me out for a day, a day and a half, so I might not be available if I haven't recovered. Okay, thank you.
And the 15th, I will not be here.
Thank you.
Hi, John.
Oh, sorry.
Reports, trustees, we'll start... Yes? Come on up. Yeah, the Green Bay Trail seems to be popping up more in the conversation, which I think is a good thing, and hopefully we'll be able to talk about it a little bit more as a group here as well. Anybody else? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we'll start with reports, and we'll start with Penny. Ann? John?
As reported, the plan commission is still working on the comprehensive plan proposals from firms. They've conducted some interviews, some cross-checking, and some questions back and forth, and should have something to the council shortly.
Great, thank you. Andy?
Nothing other than thank you to the Historical Society and the village staff for the closing ceremony, the 150th, that was great.
Yeah, it was a fun time.
Yeah.
It really was.
Petting Zoo was a big hit with the little ones.
And the big ones, too.
Yeah.
I love a good petting zoo. Jack?
I joined with Andy and congratulating the village and Historical Society on this event. Otherwise, no little report.
Thanks. Village manager, Village Attorney?
No report tonight.
Village manager?
No report this evening.
And Village President, I have no report. Okay, moving forward, approval of the agenda. Does any trustee wish to move an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Item seven, the consent agenda. I will ask the village clerk to read the items on the consent agenda.
Approval of the village council, meeting minutes for September 10th, 2019, study session, and the September 17th, 2019, regular meeting, and approval of the warrant list dated September 13th through the 26th, 2019, in the amount of $1,145,410.60.
Thanks. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Trustee Lamfair?
Yes.
Trustee Colodachi?
Motion carries, thank you. All right, item number eight, moving right along. Ordinance number M-162019, establishing an administrative procedure to determine eligibility for benefits under the Illinois Public Safety Employee Benefits Act, and this is up for introduction, and page 12 of your agenda, and Megan is going to guide us through that conversation.
Hi, good evening. So as noted in your agenda materials, the council adopted Resolution R-602018 last October. While the village has no active claims under the Illinois Public Safety Employee Benefits Act, it's important that we have a procedure in place in the case that does occur so that applicants are well informed of the requirements. So while the state sets the requirements for what the benefits are, they leave the specific process to each municipality. So what is before you tonight is essentially the same procedure that you adopted last year, but a few clarifications on process requirements, mostly clarifying timing and making things a little more specific. We also felt it was important for this procedure to be more formally established by ordinance rather than resolution, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Counsel, any questions for Megan on the current ordinance?
Just out of curiosity, why, what's the benefit of having an ordinance rather than a resolution?
Slightly more formal in terms of its codification and reference point. You know, a resolution will sort of go on our internal books and be approved, but an ordinance is more formally kept and available in terms of its establishment. So if someone wants to check and see if we have a procedure, it's a little more accessible for them to understand that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll open the microphone up to the audience. Would anybody like to share their thoughts on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and any final thoughts, comments, issues? Nope?
Thank you, Megan.
That's a good comment. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance number M-162019?
So moved. Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, ordinance number M-172019, 880 Willow Road, variations, and this is up for introduction, possible adoption. The applicant is, this applicant is seeking zoning relief on gross floor area, front yard setback, and side yard setback to construct a new single-family residence on an existing foundation. Case was recommended for approval of the variations by the ZBA with a vote of four to two, and our Director of Community Development, David Schoen, is here to put us through our paces.
Yeah, so this evening, I'm going to spend a little time on this one, given the circumstances that led us to today, and also the zoning relief and how it was, how zoning is applied in two different situations relating to the same project. So the property is located in the R2 Single Family Zoning District, and its designation is consistent with the comprehensive plan. These lots there along Willow, at Willow and Birch, those small ones, were platted in 1879. Originally, those five lots were actually nine lots of 25 feet in width, and over time they were combined to create slightly larger lots, not a whole lot larger. And in 1907, the residence was built. The last building permit before this year was in 1929, that's the last building permit we have on file. In April of this year, we issued a building permit for a major remodeling and addition project. There were pre-existing non-conformities related to the structure, it included a front yard and side yard setbacks, were non-conforming. They proposed an addition, which they had approval for at the rear of the property, that complied with all setbacks. So in this instance, a significant remodeling project, and I can let the applicant explain that as they got into it, they discovered that they felt they needed to tear down the framing, more of the structure than originally planned. Given that they tore it down to the foundation, we now consider that a new home, which means different zoning regulations apply to it. Does this happen very often? No, but it does happen. And in some circumstances, it's a more significant issues have to be addressed, such as this, because there's non-conforming setbacks, with the Cherry and Hibbert property located in the floodplain, that developed into a little more complicated situation. There's another situation that occurred in the community that you probably didn't even notice that it happened, because it occurred so quickly. The other issue associated with this is not, ideally, the person would come and say they're changing their scope of work, but they're still planning to build basically the same house we approved administratively by staff. So this is our site plans of before and after, are existing and proposed. So on the left is the existing, so they were, here's the existing home, the footprint of the existing home, and existing garage. They were going to demolish the garage and then add an addition on to the rear, and then a significant remodeling of the house. So the proposal today is basically the same as the remodeling addition, it's just they're rebuilding everything and have to meet different requirements because of that. So just to point out, the lot itself is a non-conforming lot. The minimum lot area in our R2 district is 24,000 square feet. This is a little over 4,900 square feet. Minimum average lot width is 100 feet. This lot is a little under 38 feet in width. So the lot's not typical for the district. The other issue in terms of, from a zoning perspective, our zoning code has a different standard for a pre-1989 building versus a post-1989 building when it comes to the height of the basement above grade. So before 1989, that, the amount of basement that could be above grade was four feet. So this was an existing home. It was less than four feet, but more than the current standard, if you were to build a new house, of two and a half feet. It's actually six points, I'm, 3.67 feet. So it complied as a remodeling of an existing home in that we didn't count the basement and the floor area. Now that is a new home after 1989, and that basement extends more than two and a half feet above grade, we now count it in the gross floor area. The project in essence is the same, but from a zoning perspective, because we now treat it as a new home, it has a different standard it must adhere to. So they need a zoning variation for the gross floor area. So that's one variation. The second variations deal with existing conditions of the foundation in terms of its relationship to the front property line and the property line to the east. So they're maintaining the foundation, they want to reuse the foundation, and so that foundation is a little under 14 feet from the front yard and a little over three feet from the side yard. The front yard in the R2 district is a 50-foot setback, and then the side yard, the minimum side yard would be six feet on this side, on the other side it would be eight feet. So they need variations to accommodate the existing foundation. So the zoning board of appeals discussed this at their last meeting. They, at one point, were divided three to three regarding the issue. Some individuals, their perspective was, it's a non-conforming lot, it's a challenge to construct on. The proposed construction is basically the same as what staff approved administratively in terms of what's going to be there, would be the same. And then the GFA, if, you know, it complied with the old requirement, so because the standard changed, they thought it was still appropriate. The other members opposed it because they believed the new construction should have to comply with the zoning requirements. And that would be, you should try to build on the lot without any or minimal variations. Some felt that given the other homes along Willow, next to them, and their proximity to Willow Road, that a front yard setback would seem to be, variation would seem to be appropriate, but the other two variations, they thought, could be addressed by increasing the setback to the east and rebuilding the found, doing something with the foundation such that it was no more than two and a half feet above grade. So at one point in the meeting, in order to forward a recommendation on to the board, one member switched his vote from, his position from no to yes, thus you have the four to two recommendation from the zoning board of appeals. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm sure we have a few on... I'm sure we have a few questions on this, so why don't we, Jack, you want to lead it off? We'll just kind of work our way around. You have any questions for...
I do, but if I could wait a sec, and I haven't quite figured out my question yet.
Andy?
Yeah, so David, the points that the zoning board were sort of wrestling with, the side yard setback, it would be 3.2 feet, is that right? Yeah. With the current plan, keeping it on the foundation, that's not a change over the existing condition, it's just a newer house on an old foundation?
Correct.
The requirement of six feet would require reducing the width of the house by 2.8 feet, right? So was there some discussion of what that would look like?
The members who had that position focused a little more on, there could be some reduction on the west side, because it's 11.4 feet.
Right.
And that maybe the house could be...
So they want to bump it over? But isn't there, there's a driveway on the other side, though?
There is, there is a driveway, and they didn't get into a lot of discussion of what would be an adequate, a minimum width for a driveway?
Yeah. Is it, is it possible to do that even, because I don't think it is? Is it possible to move a, like, with the driveway on the west, that's like an eight-foot driveway with some kind of reasonable, and I'm sure there's a village requirement on how far you can, close you can build up to that, too, but...
There's no minimum for a driveway.
Okay.
It just becomes practical.
And you get a car through.
Right. So you think a parking space, a standard parking space, we try to get it to be nine feet wide, I'm just trying to give you a perspective.
Yeah.
You often will find, you know, on Chestnut Court before the Streetscape project, some of those were down to eight and a half.
Yeah.
So then, you know, someone would pull in the driveway, I mean, their current design is just to have a driveway along the side, so they would need to get in and out of their cars along that side, you know, could they change that by bringing the driveway all the way back to the rear of the house to have you get in and out of your car? So it would be tight.
Yeah.
And the other side was, was that worth it to make that move, make all this move to come into compliance?
Right, right, and I'll speak to that later, but yeah, I just was curious, because there was this discussion about it, if anyone had actually thought the practicality of it, or if there was any practical option, and honestly, I don't, I don't really see it, but that's something I guess we'll talk about. And then the other thing that they were hung up on that was the height out of the basement?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any reason that people were particularly concerned about the height out of the basement, like a practical reason other than just application to code? Because I didn't get a sense of that.
I didn't, didn't get a real sense of that either, like, in this particular situation, an issue with that?
Yeah.
Other than it would be in a new home, they should try to bring it into compliance in some way.
Okay. Okay, those are the only questions, thank you.
So continuing on the same question about bringing out of the basement, the base height above the grade, the biggest issue to the gross floor area is probably counting the basement as gross floor area.
Yeah.
So people understand that, that's really what gets them in their trick bag of, the gross floor area is counting the basement.
That's because of the height.
That's because of the height. It's, you know, it's already there, whatever, it's fine, probably.
And without that, where would they be on the square footage?
It's like...
So that's like 943 square feet, so you remove that from the 28...
And I'm asking for 943 variance.
So basically, it's the basement.
Yeah, okay.
It is basically the basement.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
And then I saw there were letters from neighbors, you know, in favor of the zoning. Is there, were there any negative, or were they negative?
You should have received an email today from one of those neighbors who also appeared at the ZBA meeting. They, before the meeting, they had signed a letter, this is the individual on Birch, on the corner, had signed a letter, support of the request. They did come to the ZBA meeting and expressed they had changed their opinion and were no longer in favor of it, and then they sent a follow-up email, which you should have received today, restating that they were opposed to it because they didn't feel it met all of the variation standards.
Got it, okay.
I think they did, just to jump in and elaborate, there was also, they were raising the air and light issue is one of their concerns as well.
And could you expand on that? I didn't understand if the house is basically in the same spot and everything, how it would affect air and light?
I just think their position is that if it's a new house, it should be built to new standards, and that standard, the community has decided is six feet for air and light between homes, and that's what they think it should be.
I thought I saw some comments about air and light that referred to the fact that the house was now going to go back further with the addition?
Yes.
And also that there was a change in the way the windows would be lining up, and I couldn't tell from the testimony in the zoning board whether that was the windows of the house, the neighbor's house or the new house, would be lining up in a different way, but there seemed to me to be some concern about the way that would be affected. Did you, I don't know...
Yeah, they did express that, and I can't elaborate on it, I don't know if they're here this evening to elaborate on that. In terms of the addition, the addition does meet the standard, the minimum setback. It's the existing portion of the house that does not meet the minimum setback.
So just to clarify then, David, the house itself is exactly what was approved for a remodel, is what they've submitted, but instead of being old materials, it's now all new materials?
On the existing foundation.
On an existing foundation. I, you know, I feel like we get really caught up in this kind of definitional stuff, but we had already approved, correct, the addition as an attachment to an existing structure? Is that correct? It was already approved?
Yes, the addition was approved administratively as part of their remodel permit.
So I, so I don't, I don't understand the objections now. I think that they'll have a better product that lies in the same exact space that was going to be there before, correct or incorrect? I mean, there's no further encroachment on the neighbors than there was when it was just a remodel and addition?
There's no additional encroachment, but it does, it does need relief as a new structure.
Right, so we have bureaucratic, you know, compliance issues that change because it went into a different category, but in terms of any kind of significant issue for the neighbors, we're not creating an increased hardship over that which we had already approved.
Correct, the existing house was there.
Okay.
Yes. So my concern is... The existing portion of the house was there.
Ideally, to make sure that the floor-to-floor's and the roof heights are all the same as the existing house was.
Correct.
Not all of a sudden have to 12-foot ceiling.
Right, right.
Right.
So...
So what happens a lot, I'm sure you get these houses, they get into them, which they probably could have seen from the start that it was in bad shape.
Right.
But my big question is, how is the foundation right now?
Yeah.
Or are they going to come back and say, oh, geez, the foundation's also bad, we're going to rip that out?
Well, when they resubmit their building permit to demonstrate how they meet standards, both from the code, zoning and building code perspective, they're going to have to demonstrate that the existing foundation can support the structure.
Right, so I think part of, what I would like to have part of an emotion, maybe, is that they are to use the existing foundations.
I'm sorry, that's...
To use the existing foundations, if for some reason they're going to tear them out for nuances, then we should come back and relook at it.
Is the owner here? Or... I, because I, I don't know, I live around the corner, and I've been looking at the, I mean, the foundation is not in good shape, and so, can you come up? I mean, yeah, can I, can I talk?
Hold on, just a second, Penny.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm so...
Stay there for a second, please.
My fault. Yeah, right, excuse me.
What we're trying to do is get through questions for David right now.
Yeah, oh, David, questions?
And then we'll get into deliberation.
That's my major question, is...
We got one more for David.
I get to call the witness.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. God, I'm so sorry.
Other question for David, the previous approved permit, and when it goes back into a new building permit for new residents like we're doing now?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any stormwater requirement differences for this project?
No, given they're using, generally not, I mean, Public Works will look at it in terms of maybe how to approve drainage, but given that they're using the existing foundation, I don't believe...
But with the addition, is no under other storage required for the addition now? Because the whole building basically is new? Or just really look into that closer if you can?
Yeah, I'll talk with Steve more about that.
Okay. Is there a policy, I mean, we've got the new rule, if you rebuild, you have to, there's been a change in... that was going to be there before, correct, or incorrect? I mean, there's no further encroachment on the neighbors than there was when it was just a remodel and addition?
There's no additional encroachment, but it does, it does need relief as a new structure.
Right, so we have bureaucratic, you know, compliance issues that change because it went into a different category, but in terms of any kind of significant issue for the neighbors, we're not creating an increased hardship over that, which we had already approved.
Correct, the existing house was there.
Okay.
So my concern is... Existing portion of the house was there.
Ideally to make sure that the floor-to-floor's and the roof heights are all the same as the existing house was.
Correct.
Not all of a sudden have to 12-foot ceilings.
Right, right.
Right.
So...
So what happens a lot, I'm sure you get these houses, they get into them, which they probably could have seen from the start that it was in bad shape.
Right.
But my big question is, how is the foundation right now? Are they going to come back and say, oh geez, the foundation's also bad, we're going to rip that out?
Well, when they resubmit their building permit to demonstrate how they meet standards, both from the code, zoning and building code perspective, they're going to have to demonstrate that the existing foundation can support the structure.
Right, so I think part of, what I would like to have part of an emotion, maybe, is that they are to use the existing foundations.
I'm sorry, that's...
To use the existing foundations, if for some reason they're going to tear them out for nuances, then we should come back and re-look at it.
Is the owner here? Because I, I don't know, I live around the corner, and I've been looking at the, I mean, the foundation is not in good shape, and so, can you come up? I mean, yeah, can I, can I talk?
Hold on, just a second, Penny.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just...
Stay there for a second, please.
My fault. Yeah, right, excuse me.
What we're trying to do is get through questions for David right now.
Yeah, oh, David, questions?
And then we'll get into deliberation.
That's my major question, is...
We got one more for David.
I get to call the witness.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, God.
Another question for David. The previous approved permit, and when it goes back into a new building permit for new residents, like we're doing now, is there any stormwater requirement differences for this project?
No, given they're using, generally not. I mean, Public Works will look at it in terms of maybe how to approve drainage, but given that they're using the existing foundation, I don't believe...
But with the addition, is no under other storage required for the addition now? Because the whole building basically is new? Just really look into that closer if you can.
Yeah, I'll talk with Steve more about that.
Is there a policy, I mean, we've got the new rule, if you rebuild, you have to, there's just been a change in zoning standards. Is there some kind of a policy idea that you can comment on, that we're impinging on by, if we do approve this? In other words, is there some overriding policy consideration that would call for us to enforce the rules strictly in this case? And say, no, you're a new house, you've rebuilt, the rules are pretty clear that if you rebuild like this, if you tear everything down, you have to do, you have to follow the new rules, the new zoning regulations, and build a smaller house?
So administrative, so staff, once they did that, from staff's perspective, they need to build a house in compliance with zoning. They have the right to request relief, which they're doing today, to not have to build it in compliance with zoning, as anyone has the right with a project to request variations.
So if we're trying to determine whether or not we should grant the relief, we have to try to come up with understanding why it is the rules more strict now than it was previously in terms of zoning?
That, and also how does it apply to this particular lot? Are the zoning requirements appropriate? Is there something unique about this lot, given its dimensions, its size, that would warrant continuing to grant, or to grant the variations?
Is there anything in terms of this zoning case that says, you know what, really, we should enforce this rule strictly, and we should force them to rebuild this house on the smaller footprint that the new zoning rules would call for? Or is it such an odd lot in a strange place, narrow and long, that there really is no other better use for it?
That's for the council to decide whether or not to grant the variations, whether it's...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, in your experience, is there something about this that, never mind?
One quick question. Is there a difference in terms of the FAR for pre, you know, whatever it was, the pre-GFA versus post-GFA construction? So if, wasn't it like 0.4 versus 0.38, or something like that?
Yeah, but then it's, it's a little more complicated.
Of course, of course, right, right.
The formula we use, but...
Right.
Not that significant if there is a difference in the situation.
Okay, right.
Okay, what I'd like to do is open the microphone up for public, actually, what I'd probably like to do is hear from the applicant first, and hear their side of the story, and find out what they were thinking, and what they were doing, and everything else. So could, could one of you come up and... Yeah, you can bring, everybody in the world can come up. It's open mic night.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Julian Kasakou.
And Donia Tansy. And so, yeah, we purchased this property in January, and we actually put the request in for, to get approval for the permit, and it went through, and we started kind of demolating the house. I'm just going to, going to make it short. And when we slowly, slowly started demolating the house, we, I mean, we did it with hand, we didn't with machines. So when we got to the floor, and when we took it down, we discovered that the structure is not, you know, is not safe. So what happened, that it was a windy night, and we had to kind of get the wall down. And then we contacted the village and let them know this is what happened. That's why I think we're going through this zoning issue. And all we're doing, basically, we are building the same house, and just like Anne said, this was approved prior to even demolating the house, the permit went through. I don't think there's going to be a big effect on our neighbors with lighting, or anything that, I think I heard. And I think I will just hand it to you with the foundation, because you had something to say about the foundation.
So before we process the house, like, everybody know, the house is 100 and some years old, 1905. So I have a structural engineer, then he come over and he checked the foundation. So I have the paper, then the foundation, it's structural good enough to be rebuilt or to support the house. And after that, I got, because even the letter was requested for the mortgage company, they want that letter, too. So that's why I agreed to have that inspection in the house. And then when we start the process, we start to fix the house, I already did the whole foundation with the, I...
Reinforce.
Reinforce the whole foundation. So the foundation is reinforced right now.
Because I, as I said, I live around the corner, so I've been walking by it for months, and then I really took a good look at it this afternoon. And the, the front part, I mean, it seems to me that the very front part of the house is actually, it was just originally just like a front stoop or something, it's just basically has a brick foundation, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead, yeah.
That one is not the foundation, it's just the top of the house. It's coming from the ground.
But that part, it goes down, that goes down further than with the rest of the house. So, yeah, I was, I, I mean, I have no, I have no idea, it just looks like it's in pretty rough shape, yeah.
Yeah, it's ugly, I know, it's not...
Oh, it's not ugly, it's not that, I mean, just in terms of...
It's not the area, we're trying to kind of get a...
If it's, if it's secure, and so, yeah, I was just questioning whether or not it was, it was, you know, worthwhile to reinforce what you got, or just to, to build something that would be, you know, definitely would carry you through. You know, I just, I do have that concern, for your sake. Right, right. To spend the money to build a new house on top of a crummy, you know, a crummy...
Of course.
Foundation is not such a great...
Yes, was that safe, and we don't want to do that.
Right, right.
That's why we are here.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So the height of the house you're proposing would be the same as it was before?
Same shape, same, same thing. Nothing is going to be changed.
Anybody else have questions for the applicant? John?
Did you ever, assuming the foundation's adequate, that's great. But looking at the setbacks, if you did build a new foundation wall to meet the setbacks on the sides, you actually have a little room possibly to go further deep to the rear of the lot, and maybe get a reconfigured house, but I'm assuming, I mean, they're not here for that.
He's an architect.
Yeah, so... As long as the existing foundation is being used and is structurally sound, I'm okay with it. So, we're good.
That was pro bono, right?
Yeah, but by the time you take all that down, it's like this little piece left, why not? And maybe maximize a little bit more.
Yeah, that was my thought, too, John.
How, how much further back is the building envelope in terms of the permissible? You know, how far back could you go into the lot with the building envelope?
It looks like the information I have is 14 more feet.
14 more feet back?
If I'm reading it right. The setback to the rear, they could actually go 14 more feet back, if I'm reading the...
I think they do go back 14 feet.
There's a dimension on there, but I can't...
Yeah, attachment C in our package. Yeah, but you got, you got a note of minus, negative 14.13 feet. 30 more to the house? Okay. And they're currently 58?
What is the setback, it's so little, I can't see what the dimensions are. What is the setback of the addition, the side from the east lot line? That's eight feet, okay, great, thank you.
And that is conforming. Come on up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Wana Ergeladjo, and I'm the design professional for the first metal we had on the rear addition. I was thinking that it might be important to know that the rear foundation is already built, and considering going back with the house would be some additional work that I'm not sure if, from a financial point of view, it's worth it or not. But this is already built, the foundation on the rear side.
Yeah, if it's already built, it'd probably be a little bit harder, because I'm thinking, if you're going to do a new foundation that conforms, you would also lower the basement, so that it's not above ground, and the square footage doesn't count.
Space anyway, right? The part that's laid was not going to be part of the usable basement.
Right.
Yeah, but you're talking about layering on expenses for people after it's been, you know, approved and they were in good faith...
Understand.
...erecting something.
You do understand when these things go foul like this, that you need to let the village know, right? I mean...
Yes, I understand that, and I apologize for not waiting until the next day, because I remember that night when we demolished the floor, it was really windy, it was a bad night. And the walls were actually, because they were not secure, because we left the left and right wall to sit, that was our plan. And that night was really windy, and I remember it rained later. So what we had to do for the safety reason, we have a neighbor that they have two kids, and they're always running in the backyard, and they're playing. For the safety reason, we didn't want that wall to be moving like that. So we decided to let it down, and right away we called Alex, and we let him know that this is what we did. And as soon as he said stop the work, we put the fence around, and we stopped the work, and we cut the electric and everything. So actually, it was for the safety reason, we did that.
I understand, sometimes you have to do things...
Yes, yes, and I apologize for not waiting until the next day, but at the same time, for safety reasons, we decided to bring it down, because it was just, you couldn't stand it and watching the walls were moving.
I can understand that. Actually, I almost lost a historic structure in Glencoe 20 years ago under similar circumstances. Sometimes you've got to make those tough decisions, I get it. But it definitely is important to keep the village in the loop on those sort of things. And obviously, this is a big change, and something that folks at our zoning board were really conflicted with it. And that's part of why you're here tonight. So, does anybody have any other questions for the applicants, or comments?
No, not for the applicant, but for David, maybe.
Okay, you folks can sit down, and what I'd like to do is open up the microphone to anybody else who might like to speak on this issue. No neighbors or anything like that? I guess not, so David, you can come back up and talk with John.
Yeah, just Peter, village attorney, just pointed out to me that, take a look closely at the stormwater ordinance, that when he goes to the new construction, like a partial new, like we're doing now, the new amount of impervious needs to be accounted for, for stormwater, the difference from the existing to the new.
If there is.
The additions already differ, so...
Yes.
But it's a new set of rules with what we're going through.
Okay.
Check that out, please, thank you.
One other quick question, I keep saying that, I'm sorry. What is the standard for demolishing, for when a house needs to be demolished versus, or what's considered basically a demolition rather than a renovation?
A demolition is when more than 50% of the floor area is removed, that's our code definition.
More than 50% of the...
Floor area.
So, meaning having been taken out, so at what point would that, would... What is being done to a house in terms of taking it down at the studs, and then taking the floors out? At what point would that, like, when you take off the whole first floor, or second floor, or...
Well, it depends on if the second floor is more than 50% of the total floor area.
Yeah, yeah, but certainly by the time...
It's on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
I mean, it, we can spend a lot of time working with applicants who are avoiding trying to have it count as a new home, and trying to get them to show on their plans exactly what they're doing.
So I guess, just my question is, in part, it, it, I mean, the 50% threshold was probably crossed a fair bit of time before the applicants actually got to the point where the walls were creating a problem, right? Or am I wrong on that one?
It could have been.
Yeah.
I don't, we're not out watching every side in terms of their demolition, in terms of how they're taking it down, and what's observable from the street.
I just, I, I, as...
But they didn't get to 50% at the last moment.
Right, right, yeah, okay.
So as long as you're talking, Penny, why don't you kick it off and let us know what you're thinking here?
Well, if I said you asked a question about FAR and difference, it's 98 square feet, I just...
Oh, okay, so minimal, okay, great, thanks. You know, this is an interesting one for me, because, you know, I, I have been looking at GFA questions and things like this for a really long time, and in terms of, you know, our regulations, in terms of thinking about, when do you want to bring a house into, you know, bring the housing stock into conformity, and do we want to allow existing non-conformities to continue? And how do we think about old houses versus new houses, and so forth? To me, when we're looking at this, the question, it's really a sense of trade-offs, because the building envelope is so small, and the lot width is so narrow. So, you know, the question is, are we considering this to be basically, you know, a total tear-down, and it's a new lot, and so therefore, the house needs to be in conformity with existing building standards? And if so, what would happen, you know, where, where would, how would the house be built? Obviously, it's a little crazy to think of it as being an R2-type lot, when in fact, it's really a lot more like the lots on the other side of the street, which is an R5 zoning, you know, it's our smallest lot zoning district. And so, even though it's unusual within the zoning district along Willow Road, these lots are not unusual. So I really look at it as more being kind of a, an R5, an R5 kind of a, a house. And I really looked at it in that regard. So, looking at it from an R5 standard, what's permitted, I mean, what, what they're requesting is within, pretty much within the standards of the size of the house, in terms of the height, and, and in terms of the building dimensions. The question is just where, where does it sit on the lot? And if we were to enforce it as a new construction, and to have the six-foot, six-foot setback to the east, then they're going to be building a longer house, which is going to extend towards the south and will affect light and air of the neighbors to the east. Really, almost, almost more, because the part, the old non-conforming part of the house is, sits in an area that doesn't really affect them so much. So I'm not sure how much would be gained by having a six-foot setback at that particular part. The issue of requiring a new foundation, requiring them to start from scratch and build a new foundation, so that they can have a complying basement, and that would be in a two-and-a-half-foot height, rather than, you know, the four-foot. I'm not sure anything would be gained, because, you know, the building would still be the same height, probably. I don't think it would make it any lower, they would just be able to make the upper stories taller if they wanted to. So I'm not sure anything would be gained by doing that. In general, that regulation was to, you know, keep houses from having a really high front stoop and, and looking out of line with the other houses that's in, you know, in the context of the neighborhood. But this house is, was built at the same time as the other houses, and so it's pretty much in keeping, because they were all built at the same time, pretty much the same time. So I don't think anything would be gained by that. My only concern is that the basement is, is in tough shape, and again, I just hope that you're not, you know, putting good money after bad in that regard. But that's up to you all and the village, in terms of the building code requirements.
So it sounds like you're supporting this.
Yeah, you know, just, as, in general, I wouldn't, but when looking at what would be gained by enforcing the, a new house... be gained by enforcing the, a new house requirements, I don't think anything would be gained for the neighborhood. But as I said, in general, I don't, I don't support that because the reason why we have this regulation is to gain the opportunity for houses to have appropriate light and air and to, for houses to fall in line and have more of a rhythm for the neighborhood. So, the general goal for that particular policy, I don't think would be achieved in this particular circumstance.
Okay, Anne?
Penny, I think those are really good insights and I appreciate the detail that you look at it with, so I'm not gonna repeat that. But I do think, just more generally, that because of the oddity of the land, that no matter what is gonna be built on that land, it's gonna have to have some kind of zoning relief, I can't tell you what it is, but, so I'm, I'm very comfortable with where we're at. I think it's unfortunate and they're experiencing a huge amount of cost that they didn't anticipate because of having to take apart, to, you know, to demolish the part above the ground. So, you know, I don't feel like there's any material change from the previous plan and at the end of the day, it'll be a better product and we were all okay with it before, so I don't see why we're not all okay with it now. And to your points, Penny, I think just looking at the character of that neighborhood, it's, you know, it fits, it's not like a glaring, you know, weirdo thing that's sticking out all of a sudden. So, and I'm empathic to their sunk costs of already having moved ahead with a plan that they thought was gonna work in good faith and they already built a whole nother foundation and just, you know, the layering on of cost and we want Weneka to be affordable when it can be instead of crazy. So I, I support, I support the zoning adjustments.
Great, thanks, Anne. John?
Yeah, I mean, I support it overall, I mean, give them credit for trying to, trying to repurpose an existing house, make it, make it good and add addition to it. Unfortunately, what happened, happened. The only thing I state is that, you know, they, they've presented today that the foundation's structurally good, that they use existing foundation and keep it there. For some reason, those walls fallen because of earth pressure or something next week, they have to come back to us for additional relief and/or a new plan. So, that's it though.
Gotcha.
Thanks.
Andy?
I support the relief, good luck. I feel a lot better about my old house, I was feeling kinda bad because the air conditioner broke down, but you've got me beat by a mile. Good luck, it's like watching an HGTV episode of you guys, so I hope it works out for you.
Yeah, I, I support the relief, I think that Penny's right, there's no policy reason to not allow the relief, the lot's too small, it would be too hard to, I mean, the house that they would get out of it would be a garden shed, it seems like, if they had to go in for new relief. I think that some of the things that the zoning board hearing covered were important to, one of the problems with the neighbors seemed to have is that the lot or that the management of the construction was not done well at certain points. There seems to be complaints about things being done and then seeking permission later or, or, you know, let's do it and let it go to them later on. And there seems to be sort of an attitude with the people who complained about it that that's what they felt was going on. But as the testimony goes on through the ZBA, they, they end up saying they didn't think there was a bait and switch going on, which, which is sort of what at first I was thinking, when I was reading the documents. So I think that it's a, it isn't going to impact the neighbors, I think it's going to, any more than they're already impacted, I think the house is going to fit in and be appropriately sized because it's obviously replacing one that was there. So I, I think that it, they should get the relief. Okay. And you folks understand your neighbor's concerns with the loose supervision and that you really need to be attentive. You, you mentioned there's little kids in the yard next door and, you know, when you're working in tight quarters and in existing neighborhoods, it takes a lot of additional foresight to make sure that what you're doing is consistent and that, you know, your workplace is appropriately maintained and kept clean and appropriately fenced and all those things because, you know, you have to be a good neighbor from the very beginning. And, you know, we have enforcement people who obviously have been enlightened to the fact that there were concerns in the neighborhood just about the construction process, so you just gotta tighten it up, is really what it boils down to. And make sure you understand that, you know, especially, you know, when you're leaving for the weekend on a Friday, that that place is spick and span and that things aren't left out that, that might interest kids and they might end up wandering into your sight and hurting themselves and that's a real concern, it really is. So, you know, relative to the, to the actual, you know, request, I don't have to vote, so I don't care. When I do have to vote, I do care, but, but, and I do care about this because I care that the zoning board put a lot of effort into it, but, you know, I could go either way on this and probably could be convinced either way on it. Sounds like, John, that you're interested in potentially making a motion with a proviso that the existing foundation be used?
That is correct.
Can somebody help him with that motion?
If it's, if it's sound and makes sense to use it.
And they represented that they had a structural engineer said it is, so.
Right.
Because if not, and then there's a lot of room on the lot.
Yeah.
Build a house that conforms by going longer.
Right, right.
Well, I think that if it doesn't, if they can't use the foundation, then they're back to square one in terms of...
Right, right.
Agreed.
Yeah, and, right, and I mean, it's, it's unfortunate that part of the foundation was already laid, but I think that should not necessarily be our consideration in terms of how we think about this, yeah.
I just, I'm sorry, so we did a new foundation for the addition, but, sorry. I don't think we quite understand, so we did a new foundation on the addition and also all over the house, it's new foundation, like it's reinforced, so there's concrete all over, we're not building in the old foundation, does that make sense?
Did you take out the old foundation?
No, we didn't take it out, but there are like concretes against, like there, there's reinforced.
Okay.
So we're not building in the old, 100-years-old house.
That's fine.
Is that clear?
Do we need...
That's, that's okay.
Believe me, I'm planning to leave there, so I would not leave on something that is not...
Yeah, because it's still caving tomorrow.
Right, I mean, I guess, I guess, thank you.
Okay.
And, and what I think the issue is here is, is our approval predicated on, on that condition and...
Yeah, I think, well, I'd like it to be that it's using the existing foundation, if it's reinforced, that's okay too.
Okay, now I'm gonna ask a completely different question, does anybody, is anybody interested in waiving introduction and moving to adoption?
My...
There's one?
That's okay.
I think I need a, help me out here with this.
I need a motion to waive.
I need a motion to waive.
So moved.
Second.
And this becomes a...
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Wedner?
Yep.
Trustee Kreit?
Yep.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Lantheer?
Yes.
Now you can adopt.
Now we can go ahead and adopt the ordinance or the motion?
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Motion to adopt the ordinance with the caveat that they use existing foundation and they reinforce, that's also acceptable.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Who made the motion?
I'm second.
You're second.
I'm second, okay.
Two, two motions.
Trustee Kreit?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yep.
Trustee Lantheer?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
And you know Jessica Tucker gave me her copy of The Rules of Roberts, Rules of Order? And you can tell I've really been deep into it, okay?
It should be there.
It's my safety net, yeah, I've got them on both sides, so.
All right, Bravo.
You're welcome, you passed, get to work and please be safe and be cognizant of your neighbor's concerns as well. Thanks.
Good luck.
Good luck. All right, moving along. Resolution number R75-2019, rejecting bids, waiving bidding and awarding a contract for the purchase of a transformer from Rusco. And our director of the electrical department, Brian Keyes, who we haven't seen for a while.
It's been a while, thank you.
We're glad to see you.
Good evening, tonight before you is, staff is requesting approval to move forward with the purchase of a 2,000 KVA pad mount transformer. We went out to bid for this particular unit following the use of our working stock inventory for an emergency replacement in the field, or emergent replacement in the field. So this transformer there, we're looking to procure, we go into our working stock to be prepared for the next emergent replacement. We received four bids on the transformer and because it's a transformer, we evaluate not only the purchase cost, but we look at the electrical losses of the transformer so it gets a total lifecycle cost. So, from a unit purchase price, you may not always be selecting the vendor that has the lowest purchase price, you're looking at the total lifecycle cost. In this particular case, a unit bid by the electrical distributor Rusco, a transformer manufactured by Ermco, which we've used previously and infrequently, was the lowest lifecycle cost and similar to the last time that this bid, this vendor bid transformers with us, they took exception to the village's standard identification clause in our contracts. On the previous purchase, the village attorney assisted us in reaching a mutually agreeable position on that and they've asked to use the same indemnification language again on this contract if the council is going to approve it. With that, we're seeking approval to move forward with rejecting the prior bids, waiving and moving forward with the electrical distributor Rusco to purchase a transformer in the amount of $28,870. Currently have funds in the electrical, the electric fund under Transformer Devices, we budget $172,395. Trustee Dearborn isn't here, the reason we're currently trending low is that $70,000 of that was accounted for one Weneka should it materialize this year. I was looking for him to ask me that question tonight. So with that, I would consider your consideration of adopting the resolution R75-2019, rejecting the bids, waiving bidding and awarding a contract for the purchase of the transformer from Rusco and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brian?
I'll pretend I'm Bob for a second. So, so if you had $172,000 in the fund, 70 was for the one Weneka which may go somewhere down the road and you already spent 60, so we're just, we're still within a budget for the year.
Still within budget, we're gonna trend, I think the number I gave Finance Director Sloth for year-end is 102,000. We've got some other smaller transformers that are working their way through the bid process that will be procured under the village manager's authority, the units are less than 25,000. So basically, you're gonna probably come in right on budget minus the one Weneka units that would have been allocated.
Yeah, thank you.
I do have a question. This is the second time that we've done this with Rusco, right?
Yes.
Just curious about the market and the perception, if, if this is a standard practice with Rusco, how do you get competitive bids when two times in a row you've now rejected, waived and negotiated with, with a favorite supplier?
Well, the, I think in retrospect on this particular case, I would have, in hindsight, would have caught it in request approval to move forward, that is our standard language going forward.
Mm-hmm.
We also looked at previously, which wasn't discussed, was we actually went back to Ermco and asked them if they would bid through a different distributor so we could continue to keep them in the pool of manufacturers, because there is a limited amount of manufacturers.
Right.
And the problem with that is they're, they will, they'd rather, they're holding firm to their contractual agreements and they'll not bid us if we enforce indemnification. So it's kind of, we're in a middle position where we, we would like to continue to keep all the, what I'll say is sizable manufacturers as approved and probably will look at requesting approval to turn, change at least with respect to transformers. And Ermco on the smaller units has not taken exception to the identification language and they have been competitive on this, what I'll call the single-phase pad mount transformers.
Mm-hmm.
So, in the marketplace, they are competitive and the other manufacturers haven't sought to take an exception to the indemnification, so either they're accepting it or they're not choosing to put a value on it.
But more importantly, are they still willing...
Yeah, we have...
Submit bids?
Yeah, so in this case...
At some point, it's like, why bother? Brian's just gonna call Rusco and negotiate a deal with them.
We got three bids and if you look at the pricing, I mean, we had some competitive pricing, so I don't sense that they're walking back from the, the opportunity to bid the Weneka bids, I think we just have to look at, to make sure that we can keep his main in the pool, we might have to revisit the contract language.
Okay.
I guess the opposite position.
What's the indemnification language problem?
Well, basically, the comparisons are page 78 versus what they've accepted in page 92 and their concern, they're, similar to our village attorney, they have a position and they're not willing, as written in our standard contract language, they're not willing, their corporate entity is not willing to accept that language as written, they would accept what's been agreed upon is on page 92.
Does it, does it put us at any more risk? Not, not materially, I mean, the language, the indemnification language that we include is, is the most protective language the village could ever want and probably more than the village would ever need. They have, like, like many contractors or whoever it is that we're negotiating against in the contract, wanna limit it to just their own negligence or just a standard of care. Our language is, we don't care whether you were negligent or not, if anything happens, you're gonna be liable. Most people push back on that language, sometimes they don't push back, as Brian said, some of the bidders don't push back on our standard language, we get it a lot. This is, they're still indemnifying us for their negligence and to me, that's sufficient for the village.
With, with respect to that language and building on what the attorney said, we generally on professional services, almost always end up in a discussion on that, as far as the acceptance of what that language would look like.
Gotcha. Okay, I'd like to open it up, anybody in the audience like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up, any other comments? Okay, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number M17?
No.
Where am I here?
Resolution.
I don't have my glasses tonight, so this is really turning into a nightmare.
Resolution number R75?
What does it say, 75?
Yeah.
May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R75-2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Calidarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Kreit?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Lantheer?
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item D, resolution number R76-2019, Police Department Partial Remodel Phase Two Adoption. On August 20th, the village council rejected bids for the second phase of the police department's partial remodeling project. After working with Orbis Construction, staff was able to refine the scope of the work and negotiate the cost to be substantially lower than that of the initial bid. Their request before council is to waive bidding and to authorize a purchase order to Orbis Construction. And Police Chief Mark Hornstein is here to review, Mark?
President Rents, council. So, as stated in the executive summary, we had bids that went out on July 8th, all of them came in in excess of our capital budget, which was 87.5. We asked council to reject those bids on August 20th, the council in fact rejected them. At that point, we went back and did our homework. Of the six bids that came in, we looked at the three lowest and wanted to try and get an assessment as to what's driving the cost of this project. In looking at the three lowest bidders, one of them that we looked at, they're, they were really, they were not an acceptable contractor for us to use based on references. Another contractor we contacted and they were unable or unwilling to provide us with further detail as far as what the cost drivers were with that project. The third one, which was Orbis, they were able to tell us what some of the cost drivers were, so we were able to take that information and refocus the scope of the project, which included cutting back on some items that we wanted to do and also changing out some of the materials that we originally were gonna use in the project. So by doing that and going back to Orbis, they were able to provide us with a quote that was substantially lower than the original quote that had come in. We still would use money from the existing capital budget and then also money, capital money going into the 2020 budget. Please note that in the contract that I worked with, with the village attorney on, we do have a provision in there that the contract would be contingent upon council appropriating funds for next year's capital budget as well. So, with that being said, we're asking to have council consider waiving competitive bidding and awarding a purchase order to Orbis Construction in the amount of $120,880.
Okay, thank you, Mark, questions for Mark?
Mark, or Captain?
Mark, or, Captain, can I ask a question? So, chief, chief. So, are you still happy with the product, or is it just, so my sense is that construction costs have gone up dramatically in the last five years, and, you know, so that affects obviously the construction that you're doing. I hope that you didn't compromise too much the materials choice in terms of, you know, how you want it to turn out or the utility that you want. So, does it make sense to put back in, you know, things that you eliminated or materials? You know, I know you've been able to work on the budget, and I'm not doing bob, I'm doing anti-bob. You know, I want to make sure that this is something that, that is nice, that is useful, that achieves the goals that you guys set out with this project, and now that you've cut it back tremendously just to hit a budget number.
No, I, I appreciate that question. Some of the things we're pulling back on, like, for example, we had three corridors on the first floor that we were going to redo flooring and wall coverings. But we can, we can always do those at a later time, that's not an urgent thing to do. The, the three main things that we really need to do sooner than later are three offices that need to get repurposed that we can use, we can get that done within the scope of this project. Other things like putting, you know, ceramic paint, more high durable paint, again, those types of things can all get revisited at a later time. So, sort of putting that balance between wanting to make sure we're being good stewards for the taxpayers, and also providing good functionality to the personnel that's within the building, I think that, that accomplishes this.
No questions?
The only, you know, along Ann's comment, the only one that, that worried, I would say, yeah, is I noticed that you were swapping out solid surfacing countertops for plastic laminate. And are these in, in, in high-use areas that, that, I didn't, I didn't dig into the drawings or understand exactly where you were making the swap, but, you know, plastic laminate is nineteen seventies stuff for the most part, and that one worried me a little bit, only from a durability standpoint. So, where's the stuff at, and what's the usage on it?
So the plastic laminate is going to go into a police equipment room. So essentially, there's going to be gear bags that will just sit on these shelves, which is what that, that'll be.
Mm-hmm.
And it shouldn't be other than an officer going and getting his or her gear bag, beginning of their shift, taking it down at the end of their shift, putting it back up. That should be the extent of it, so.
So it's, it's, it's back a house.
It's back a house. It's, I would be a little bit more concerned if it was down in our ET lab, where our maintenance technicians are working on stuff routinely, but I think considering it's a storage area, I'm, I'm comfortable with making that change.
Okay.
And, and plastic laminate is still used heavily.
Oh, yeah, I know.
You know, just, it's not inferior, so.
No, well, it depends on the use, I mean...
Agreed, and, and the type, but...
Any other questions, comments? Okay, open it up to the public. Anybody like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any, any final comments from council? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution number R seventy-six? Oh, it's out in the crowd. Somebody want to speak?
You said plastic laminate.
You gotta come, you gotta come, Ron, you gotta come up to the microphone. I don't want to have a debate on plastic laminate. But I guess we will.
You know, having, I'm Roth White, but having aerospace engineering experience and hazards of plastic laminate, and the consequences of degrading those materials, and the sometimes exposure to combustions. I'm always a little leery of them, and so I, you know, I favor steel, hardware, rather than plastic laminates. But then I, I don't know what the type, the type of surfaces, equipment, you know, the composite bins that you're having use on these things, but I'm always wary of plastic laminate.
Well, thanks, Ron.
Chris, we're sitting at plastic laminate right here.
No, I hate it.
All right.
We wanted wood, but that was what we had to do to make the budget work.
But it's, it's still good, and...
We'll like carve my initials in it, then we'll see. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt resolution number R seventy-six, twenty nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfier? Trustee Kalid Archie?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, thank you. Thanks, Mark, really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, ordinance number MC nine, twenty nineteen, prohibiting recreational cannabis businesses. This is continuing the public hearing and up for introduction. This is a continuation of the public hearing from the sep, from the September seventeen to discuss regulations for cannabis businesses in Winnetka. At that time, the village attorney was directed to draft an ordinance prohibiting all types of recreational cannabis businesses in Winnetka. The council continued the hearing to tonight in an effort to hear as many voices from the community as possible before making a final determination. And both Peter and David are going to provide us with some information.
Yes, so just quickly...
I'm going to recuse myself again.
Oh, I'm sorry. You directed us to prepare an ordinance to prohibit cannabis businesses, all types of cannabis businesses. So you have an ordinance that the village attorney drafted. The zoning ordinance is structured such that a use is only allowed if it's listed as an allowed use in a zoning category, in a zoning district. So what we've done here is we created definitions for cannabis businesses, and definition of cannabis, and we've done that so we know what those terms are defined, but nowhere in the use tables of any of our zoning districts are its, are, is it shown, so therefore it is not allowed, or it's a prohibited use. So with that, we'd be happy to answer questions on the draft ordinance?
Does anybody have any questions for David? Peter, do you have anything to add to that?
No, David did a good job.
Okay. So there's no questions for David, no questions for Peter. We will now open it up to additional comments or questions from the audience. Would anybody like to speak on this?
You know, I will just, Jessica Tucker, I think if you look at Winnetka, so I don't have anything to say unless someone's changing their mind, I just appreciate your continued support. You know, I will say the emails were outstanding and astounding and overwhelming frankly, in strong opposition, and such a cross-section of the community, from educators to counselors, even the counseling center of the North Shore, business owners, realtors, I mean, it was just amazing. And when you see that kind of support to opt out, even if they're not new voices in this community, these are longtime residents who are totally invested in this community, not the cannabis retail sales. And I think it's very important that you send the right message to all voices, new, that want to be here, and longtime residents who are here and are very concerned about their community and keeping it the lovely community that it has been, for the new voices that come in. And give a message to all voices, including our neighbor to the north, that we are opting out, and I hope you'll support the introduction and the adoption of the ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jessica. Anybody else like to comment? Come on up.
I'm Edria Keo, I live right down the street, eight one seven Chestnut Court, and I was just curious, because there are restrictions for where people can smoke, for regular smoking, is it fifteen feet from a building, is that correct?
I think from an entrance.
Okay, so I was just wondering with all our beautiful new sidewalks, sitting places that we're going to have, will some of them, if they're more than fifteen feet, people could come and sit around and smoke? I mean, this is just something to think about, you'd have mothers with their little kids, strollers, people with maybe health conditions. So it's just, from that perspective, I would just wonder, what would change? Where would people be allowed to smoke in our new area?
That's a good question. I, I don't think there's any new restrictions.
Correct.
I think just in their house, I mean, smoking pot, I think just...
Are you talking about cigarettes or cannabis?
Well, cannabis, I know cigarettes, there are restrictions, but cannabis, are there any such...
No, they're, the, same rules, same rules.
Same rules.
Yep, exact same rules.
So they can smoke in where you can smoke a cigarette?
Correct.
Well, I thought you could only smoke, I thought you couldn't smoke in public.
There's, there's no public, but the, anywhere...
The indoors, right.
Right, I'm talking about, right, anywhere there's, anywhere Smoke Free Illinois Act prohibits smoking, cannabis is prohibited from smoking. So for example, inside businesses and everything, unless the local community approves it, which this ordinance specifically says we are not approving.
And it's also prohibited in public spaces.
Smoking cannabis is prohibited in public space, so there's...
Smoking or using.
So there'd be no chance that it would be, it shouldn't be legally floating into you if you were sitting at a restaurant or something like that outdoors.
Great. Anybody else? Come on up, Ron. You're getting your money's worth tonight.
I'm Ron White, I've spoken before about potted drivers. I've emailed and Jessica, uh, no, I'm pleased that, I impressed Jessica in the email. But I think there's something more that maybe what the village leadership should do, to show leadership in, in an ongoing activity, educational activity, you know, to keep our younger people straight and away from vaping, smoking, cannabis bringing it in from either through the mails or through their, you know, wherever they get it. Many years ago, we were cautioned to avoid White's drugstore, that corner, you know, down by the New Trir High School, because they were selling reefers. And apparently some people, you know, were, you know, got arrested down there. But I, I think there's going to be a need for some ongoing education, you know, from all the, the state pressure and the national pressure, and George Soros and his people trying to, you know, have everyone smoking and getting high. But, you know, I think if we did skateboards going down a ramp down to the Green Bay Trail, that should be, you know, you know, high for Winnetka. And it's a much healthier activity on the Green Bay Trail rather than, you know, hiding under a bridge and smoking reefers anyway. It's, it's going to be an ongoing fight, I think, Winnetka and a, a coalition of like-minded communities in opposition to, you know, what's being foisted upon us by the state cannabis sales. Oh, boy, scares me.
Well, thank you, Ron, and we all need to remember that the most important education starts at home, so, thank you. All right, anybody else like to speak to this? Come on up, Pat.
Pat Bosomow, ten thirty-seven Cherry Street, long-term resident of the community. And it seems to me that we can, we can summarize this pretty quickly. Any marketing and distribution of cannabis in our village is not our character, it's not us. We want a village that is, for everybody, a pleasant place to be, a healthy place to be, and a place where we can make sure that it's our values that are demonstrated here. And so I think we need to really, really concentrate on eliminating any idea of cannabis in our beautiful Winnetka.
Thank you, Pat. Would the press like anything to add to the conversation this evening? Okay, so with everybody in the room being heard from, I will now close the public hearing and move it up here. Any second thoughts or comments before we move forward? Hearing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number MC nine, twenty nineteen?
So moved.
Second?
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Old business, we have none. New business tonight, we have none. Appointments, I'm working on it, but we still don't have any. Item twelve, closed session, we have none, and adjournment, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned, thank you very much.